Following recent terrorist attacks.
All persons having business before the Honorable the Supreme Court of the United States are admonished to draw near and give their attention.
Landmark Cases, C-SPAN's special history series produced in cooperation with the National Constitution Center, exploring the human stories and constitutional dramas behind 12 historic Supreme Court decisions.
Number 759, Ernest Miranda Petitioner versus Arizona.
We'll hear arguments in number 18, "A Row Against Wade."
Quite often, and many of our most famous decisions are ones that the court took that were quite unpopular.
Five, four, four, five, these decisions changed our lives!
Let's go through a few cases that illustrate very dramatically and visually what it means to live in a society of 310 million different people who have helped stick together because they believe in a rule of law.
Good evening and welcome to Landmark Cases. Well, we're about two-thirds of the way through our 12-week series looking at historic Supreme Court decisions. Tonight's the 1954 case of school segregation, Brown v. Board of Education. And we're going to begin this evening by listening to Lynda Brown on the roots of this case.
My memory of Brown began in the fall of 1950, in the quiet Kansas town of Topeka, where a mild-mannered black man took his plump seven-year-old daughter by the hand and walked briskly, four blocks from their home, to the all-white school and tried without success to enroll his child. Black parents in Topeka felt that the day of trying to enroll their children in the school nearest to their home was long overdue. Many were the evenings my father would arrive home to find my mother upset because I had to take a walk, just like she did many years before, and catch a school bus and be bused some two miles across town. I can remember that walk. I could only make half of it some days because the cold would get too bitter for a small child to bear. I can still remember taking that bitter walk and the terrible cold that would cause my tears to freeze up on my face.
This is Lynda Brown talking about her experience as a school child in Topeka, Kansas, and how her story led her to the Supreme Court and one of its landmark decisions. Tonight, for the next 90 minutes, we'll learn more about that case, how it came to the court, and what its implications are. And let me introduce you to our two guests at the table who will help us do that. Tamiko Brown-Negan is at Harvard University, where she teaches constitutional law and history. She's the author of Courage to Dissent: Atlanta and the Long History of the Civil Rights Movement. Welcome.
Thank you.
And Jeffrey Rosen is at the table tonight. A Constitution Center in Philadelphia, which he's the president and CEO of, has been our partner for this entire series, which we thank you for. And he's the author of numerous books on the Supreme Court, including The Supreme Court: The Personalities and Rivalries That Defined America. It's nice to have you at the table finally tonight.
Wonderful to be here, and congratulations on this great series. Your team has done such a great job, and it's really a thrill.
Thank you, and for all your help as well. So, as we get started here, let's talk very big picture and on the issue in this case. What was really the heart of what was decided here?
Well, the Supreme Court, in this case, considered the question of whether state-mandated segregation in schools was constitutional under the 14th Amendment, and thus it was an opportunity for the court to reconsider Plessy versus Ferguson, which was the 1896 case in which it had found that segregation on rail cars was within the Constitution.
And Jeff Rosen, why did this become a landmark decision?
Because by overturning Plessy, as Tamiko so well said, the court effaced the stain of this decision and fulfilled the promise of the Reconstruction Amendments. The 14th Amendment to the Constitution, passed after the Civil War, which turns 150 next year, was designed to ensure equality of civil rights. And Justice Harlan, in his dissent in Plessy versus Ferguson, thought it was obvious that a fundamental right, like the right to travel on railroads, was a fundamental civil right. But the basic insight that the court finally recognized was that separate but equal is inherently unequal, and to separate people because of their race is stigmatizing and degrading. The fact that it took, you know, almost 100 years to recognize what was obvious to anyone in the South, as Justice Harlan said in Plessy, Justice Harlan said, "Everyone knows that the purpose of segregation was to degrade African-Americans." And the fact that it took so long for the court and the country to recognize that is what made Brown such a landmark in the 20th century.
So, it is known in our society simply as Brown. But one of those little factoids that people who are learning about this along with us would be surprised perhaps is that Brown isn't one case, but it's really five cases. Explain how that works, the consolidation.
So, there were a bunch of them, and I have to have my cheat sheet actually to get them out because they're not well-known today. But one of them involved the DC government, involving whether the federal government, as well as states, could have separate schools. And to decide that case, it was called Bowling versus Sharp, the court couldn't use the Equal Protection Clause because that only binds the states. Instead, it had to use, and I'm waiting for my chance to bring out my National Constitution Center pocket Constitution, it had to use the Fifth Amendment to the Constitution, which prohibits Congress from depriving any person of due process of law. And the court read into that clause an equal protection component. It's a technical doctrine called reverse incorporation. But basically, they said it would be unthinkable that if the states can't discriminate, then DC can. But there were a bunch of other really, really interesting cases, including one that was prompted by protests by the plaintiffs. Here they are. The only win for the NAACP was a case called Gebhardt versus Beldon out of Delaware. That time, the trial court did order that African-Americans be admitted to the segregated schools. The Davis decision came out of Virginia, which challenged segregation in Prince Edwards County. And then finally, there was a case called Briggs versus Elliott from South Carolina, which was the first of the cases. But it was, there were human stories behind each of those cases, and it's almost a coincidence that Lynda Brown, who so movingly spoke, became the face of all five cases.
How does the court decide to join cases like this and into one specific case and then give that case its title?
Well, I think that in this circumstance, it consolidated these cases because they raised the same issue, with the exception of Bowling versus Sharp, which is what Jeff spoke about. They were consolidated for convenience and because it made sense to consolidate them and consider this issue as it was raised in these several states. The NAACP strategy involved filing cases in the states where the issues were most stark as to the reality that they were able to show in Brown, and that was that separate was never truly equal. That is what the court decided, that Justice Brown's decision in Plessy, where he said that if there is a harm of separation, of segregation, it's only because blacks are putting that construction on it. In Brown, the court rightly recognized that really the problem with segregation in schools, and segregation generally, the court went on to stipulate, was that it was a stigma. It was a sign that blacks were considered inferior.
One of the things that has made this whole series work for us is your participation, and there are several ways that you can do that. You can phone us, and we'll go to calls in about another 20 minutes. And here are the phone numbers, 202-748-8900, if you live in the eastern or central time zones. And if you begin dialing now, you can get into the queue. 202-748-8901. Please be careful when you're dialing those numbers as well, Mountain and Pacific time zones. Then you can also send us a tweet. If you do, make sure you use the hashtag #LandmarkCases. We'll see it in our Twitter stream here, and we'll mix your comments in. And finally, there's a discussion already underway on our Facebook page. C-SPAN is a Facebook site, and we have this video that you just saw posted, and there's comments already coming in underneath of that. You can be part of that discussion as well. And we look forward to hearing what you have to say about this case and to hear your questions about it. So, we're going to spend a little bit more time on the history that goes into this case. I do want to learn a little bit more about Plessy versus Ferguson 1896. And you mentioned that it was a transportation case.
It was. And this was a time when Jim Crow was not yet up and running. So, a law requiring segregation was not welcomed universally by the railroads themselves. It was challenged as a violation of the Equal Protection Clause. And as Tamiko well said, Justice Brown held for the court, "As long as the cars are equal, there's no problem because equality is all facilities, as all of the Constitution requires, and any imputation of inferiority is the problem of African-Americans." Justice John Marshall Harlan wrote one of the greatest dissents of the 19th century. This is a Kentucky former slave state. He's a know-nothing turned abolitionist. He says, "I'd rather be right than be consistent." He's the one who, when he's writing the decision, dissenting from the court's decision to strike down the Civil Rights Act of 1875, his wife puts the pen that Chief Justice Tawney had used to write the Dred Scott decision, and he realizes that this is the pen, and suddenly has writer's block, the words flow. So, this is one of the great defenders of the promise of the Reconstruction Amendments in the 19th century. And in his spectacular dissent in Plessy versus Ferguson, he basically says that everyone knows that the real purpose of the separation was not for the convenience of both parties, but to degrade and stigmatize African-Americans. And then in famous words, he said, "In respect of civil rights, the Constitution neither knows nor tolerates classes among citizens. The Constitution is colorblind. There is no caste here." But there's an odd preface to his decision, which is jarring by modern terms. He says, "The white race at the moment is preeminent, so it will continue to be if it maintains its traditions. But in respect to civil rights, there is no, the Constitution is colorblind." So, he was continuing this distinction that Lincoln and other, you know, Reconstruction people at the time maintained between civil and social rights. He was saying, "You have to give civil rights to everyone, but we're not mandating social equality." That nowadays has a sort of uncomfortable tone for us.
I think that's right. It's almost as if what Justice Harlan's saying is that it's overkill to dirty up the Constitution with these kinds of racial classifications. You can read the preface to that wonderful part of his opinion where he says the Constitution is colorblind, as in a way saying that because of social conditions, it's not necessary really to stipulate in the law to have our Constitution besmirched by this practice of segregation. So, a question...
Can I just add one thing on this because it's so important and interesting? This dissent is so important that Thurgood Marshall reads it before he argues Brown v. Board of Education, so he's inspired by Harlan's dissent. But as we know nowadays, and we'll talk about this later in the show, the huge question is whether, when Harlan said the Constitution is colorblind, did he mean that all racial classifications are impermissible? Or was he saying something narrower, that really it's just with respect to civil rights, fundamental rights, that the Constitution can't have racial classifications? Also, is he saying no classification, or is he saying only classifications that affirm a caste system? And this is the big debate over affirmative action. So, really, the entire history of what the Equal Protection Clause means is set up in that single dissent.
Well, that actually gives rise to the next question, which is the legacy of that decision. And it's so hard to compress the next 50 years into a couple of sentences, but we really must for time. So, did the Plessy versus Ferguson, which legalized separate but equal, it was a transportation case, but it changed society, did it in fact give rise to the Jim Crow laws, or would they have happened anyway?
You know, that's a very hard question, but it's probable that after the compromises of 1876, when the Republican Party, in exchange for winning this contested election, got out of the business of enforcing Reconstruction, would not have had the force of will to actually resist Jim Crow as it arose. So, I wouldn't say that, I'd be very interested if Tamiko disagrees. I wouldn't say Plessy caused Jim Crow, but it certainly could have come out the other way and might have stopped it.
I think that's exactly right. I would not ascribe to the Supreme Court that kind of power at that time. It was pretty late in the day. The politics of the situation that Jeff described are really important, but it nevertheless is an important indication from the court, and an indication from the court to which there was no great outcry in the public, thus suggesting that by this time, there had been a consensus reached that the South would do what the South would do in terms of race relations.
So, I need to fast-forward to 1940s America, where things are actually beginning to move in a more positive direction, notably the effect of the war and the contributions that African-Americans made during the war. In 1947, there was the desegregation of, 48, rather, the desegregation of the armed forces. In the sports world, Jackie Robinson integrated baseball in 1947. So, how were things beginning to shift in society in the late 1940s?
Well, you put your finger on something that's really important, and that is the impact of the war in terms of African-Americans serving in the war, but then coming home to this country and being mistreated, including because of the segregation laws, being mistreated by virtue of the law, but also experiencing terrible incidents of violence. And the juxtaposition of the soldiers having fought Hitler and his creed with their treatment here in this country, where they felt as if they were experiencing the same kind of ideology in this country, was enough to make the soldiers vital in the struggle for civil rights. Other things that were happening were that African-Americans had migrated in substantial numbers to the north, which meant that they were a force in politics, which was important to changing a sense of where African-Americans belonged in society. You mentioned the movements in sports, which was very important, all of which was to say that African-Americans were gaining stature, and they also were beginning, more so than ever, to think in terms of resisting these Jim Crow laws.
So, Thurgood Marshall is going to become an important player in this case. Later on in his life, he becomes the first African-American appointed to the Supreme Court. But in 1940, what was he doing?
He has founded the NAACP Legal Defense and Education Fund in order to launch a legal campaign against segregation. And he does so with a strategic brilliance that has come to be seen as decisive in the Brown victory. He looks at public opinion. He sees the forces that Tamiko has so well-described. He knows that the presidency is turning against segregation because of the Cold War, and it's really bad. The Russians are saying, "Look at these hypocritical Americans who are segregating." And so Truman desegregates the military, and the Truman and Eisenhower administrations both are supporting desegregation. But then Thurgood Marshall looks at the country as a whole and says, "There's still, segregation in public schools is deeply entrenched. A majority of states have it." He wants to start smaller, first by attacking segregation in law school admissions and graduate school admissions, and then, after having won those victories, attacking schools. He doesn't initially argue that Plessy versus Ferguson should be overturned. Instead, he says, he attacks unequal facilities in the Texas case, Sweat versus Painter, where he says, "You're not even providing an education to African-Americans, and this separate law school you've set up is patently unequal." In the McLaughlin case, a graduate student is literally demeaned by having to sit separately within the school. He's humiliated and degraded, and that is clearly unequal. After having established those two precedents, finally, there's the big debate about whether to actually call that Plessy should be overturned and that public school desegregation should be attacked, and that's what Thurgood Marshall leads.
Well, let's take a look at this map, which will show you what the public school system looked like in terms of segregation in the early 1950s. If you look on the screen, the reddish-pink areas, segregation in those states in the South was required. The orange states, segregation locally determined. The blue states, no segregation laws. And the green states in the northeast and Midwest, segregation was strictly prohibited. So, that was the situation going into this defense of, by Thurgood Marshall, of the, using, rather, the legal system to approach segregation in schools, and that's really at the heart of this case. We're going to listen to Thurgood Marshall next, talking about the legal system and his thoughts on how to use the courts to address this problem in America.
What is striking to me is the importance of law in determining the condition of the Negro. He was emancipated by law and then disfranchised and segregated by law. And I submit, the history of the Negro in this country demonstrates the importance of getting rid of hostile laws and seeking the security of new friendly laws, federal, state, and local.
Other civil rights activists would choose different methods to make the case. Thurgood Marshall chose the law. Can you talk more about that?
Sure. Well, as Jeff said, the strategy that was implemented by Thurgood Marshall and Charles Hamilton Houston, the blueprint was, it was gradual, and it was brilliant ultimately. It also was daring and risky in the minds of others at that time who were equally committed to black freedom. People like A. Philip Randolph, Ralph Bunch, Roger Baldwin at the ACLU, were skeptical of using the courts and the law to achieve emancipation, social change for African-Americans. Partly, this was because people like A. Philip Randolph were interested in an interracial labor movement as the path to equality. There were those like Ralph Bunch who thought that, "Well, the courts are only as good as the personnel on the court, and it could be expected that the judges would reflect the racial attitudes of the majority of the population. Therefore, why think that the courts would be a good venue for vindicating African-American rights?" And then there were those who said that even if Thurgood Marshall and the Legal Defense Fund were able to prevail, segregation, excuse me, discrimination could continue, notwithstanding the change in the law, which is perhaps the most profound criticism that could be made. And I have to say that all of those critics really were on to something, and that's really the difference between constitutional law in theory and on the books and on the ground. Ultimately, all of these people were saying that individuals are the face of the law, that people experience on an everyday basis, and they were skeptical that individuals would really come through in the way that Marshall imagined.
Next, we'll learn how the story of the Brown family made its way to a federal case. But before I do that, let's start mixing in your comments. First, Jeffrey Rosen is Kathy Balin on Twitter, who asked, "Did Brown actually overrule Plessy? Brown was limited to education. Did SCOTUS ever say they were overruling it?"
Brown did overrule Plessy. It was applied to schools, and then in subsequent cases, the court applied it to desegregate swimming pools and other public facilities and so forth. But the main question was, should Plessy be overturned, and Brown overturned it?
I will say, I think what the caller may be getting at is the way in which the opinion was written, and the fact that in the opinion, Justice Warren, writing for the court, used language saying, "To the extent that there's anything in Plessy inconsistent with what we're saying, then we pull back from the principle of Plessy." So, it wasn't the kind of robust language of overruling that you might see in some other cases, and I think that was by design. It was a strategy for the court to try to be a consensus court.
And there's another, that's exactly right. And there were other parts of the opinion that by failing clearly to say segregation was wrong at the time of Plessy and is wrong now because it's stigmatizing and degrading, gave critics of Brown the chance to resist it. There was most, first Warren says, "Whatever may have been the state of public education at the time of the 14th Amendment, now it's really important, and it has to be given to everyone on equal terms." But there was the famous footnote 11, in which the court, coming off of some findings in the trial court, cited the famous doll studies of Kenneth Clark that had found that African-American children had lower self-esteem and were more likely to choose white dolls than African-American dolls. And this was controversial and led the people who were resisting the decision to say that it was based on bad social science. Today, there are those, I think Tamiko is exactly right, that a clearer overturning of Plessy might have made it harder to resist Brown and would have made it harder for critics of that footnote today, including Justice Clarence Thomas, who says that the court was wrong to rely on sociological evidence. Justice Thomas would have preferred that the court in Brown simply say, "The purpose and intent and effect of segregation is to degrade, and therefore, Plessy is overturned."
You're listening to C-SPAN's Landmark Cases. We will be back in a moment.
Roberto is watching us in Marion Springs, Michigan, and You're On. Good evening to you.
Hi, good evening, Susan. Actually, one slight correction. I'm calling from Ann Arbor, Michigan.
Oh, okay. Thanks.
Yeah. But anyway, I want to congratulate you and the National Capital Center and Mr. Rosen there for a wonderful series. I'm really enjoying this thoroughly. But now I'll get to my questions. Hello?
Yes, we're listening.
Great.
Okay, go ahead. Yes. My first question is, did the framers believe that segregation was a violation of equal protection laws, given the fact that the nation's capital was segregated? And with this in mind, could the Brown decision have been made using a rigorous interpretation? And the final question is, when the Fifth Amendment was passed, obviously, it didn't have an equal protection clause. So, in the Bowling versus Sharp case, could the Bowling versus Sharp case been decided using a rigorous interpretation?
Those are three great questions. Shall I give it a shot, and then you do it too?
Sure, sure. Yes.
So, read Michael McConnell's great article, Originalism in the Desegregation Decisions. It's in the Virginia Law Review, and it's the best attempt to create an originalist defense of Brown. But let's, here's the bottom line. Here's what we know. There were those in Congress in 1868, and John Bingham was among them, who thought that basic civil rights had to be available to all and wouldn't have allowed segregation there. At the same time, Felix Frankfurter commissioned his law clerk, Alexander Bickel, to write a long study, and it's pretty clear that the people in 1868 who proposed the amendment, who ratified it in 1868 and proposed it in 1866, did not think that schools had to be desegregated. People actually stood up in the Congress that proposed the amendment and said, "Don't worry, this isn't going to apply to schools." So, in order to say that schools are covered as an originalist matter, you really have to move more to around 1875, when the Congress was more liberal. This is a problem for originalists, because if you really think what matters is what the framers and ratifiers thought, then Brown is hard to justify as a matter of original interpretation. And no current justice has really done a great job in explaining why it is consistent with original understanding.
I'm going to stop there because we're going to run out of time, and we'll get back to that later in the program. Felton is watching us in Silver Spring, Maryland, on You're On. Good evening.
Yes, my comment is...
We're listening.
Do you think that after hundreds of years of segregation, and its adverse economic impact on black families, today and in the past, deserves some type of reparations through the justice system for black American families?
Thank you.
Well, that question has been debated by a lot of people, and I think that there are certainly good arguments to that effect. I think most people come to the conclusion that there are two problems, one of which is politics, and the other of which is a concern about how one would actually assess the damages. If one could convince the right people that reparations were appropriate, how would one actually go about figuring out what was owed? Now, one might say that, "Well, just give it a shot." But it's a question that's been debated a lot, but really, the problem is a political problem.
And next is Robert, Frostburg, Maryland. Hi, Robert.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. How are you doing? Yes, ma'am. I'm a Vietnam veteran. And one of the things that have just devastated me is, first of all, democracy has never lost anywhere on earth, and it's been respected everywhere. Imperial colonial supremacy and caste racism has been, last century, was driven out of every, all over the world, just driven out of their lives because it's so intolerable to people. And now, I fought in a war where we were driven out that colonial mentality and caste racism. Here, we talk about Brown versus Topeka, Kansas, and the education system. I mean, it is so insane that we still hold on to this stupid prejudice. We had a civil war over this insanity. And yet, my country, with all of the beautiful principles that it has, and people have learned to respect it all over the world, yet we keep on holding on to what was driven out all over the world last century, whether it was armed revolution or nonviolent revolution. People are tired of that caste racism. They're tired of it everywhere on earth. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, first, I will say thank you for your service. The second thing I will say is that you make a fantastic point, which is that the US has been able to export democracy to many places, and there are many nations that look up to us for our system, for our constitutional system. And yet, it is true, I would say, that there still is a chasm...
And yet, it is true, I would say, that there still is a chasm in many instances between what I called before, law on the books, and our aspirations as a country and as a people and everyday practice. And partly, that's reflection of the fact of something that I said before, which is that, and something that frankly, the court was concerned about at various times, and that is, the ability of law to change people's hearts or everyday practices. In order for there to be social change in the way, in race relations, in the way that you aspire to rightly, it really has to occur not only institutionally, but interpersonally.
So I want to show a piece of video next. This was used in one of the lower court cases that you described earlier, Jeff Rosen, Davis versus County School Board of Prince Edward County here in Virginia. And it's interesting because it documents the differences between white and black schools in this county in Virginia. But what's interesting about it is that both sides, the plaintiffs and the defendants, use these pictures stating that they supported their position. So let's watch.
These photographs are exhibits in the court case Dorothy Davis versus the School Board of Prince Edward County. The Davis case was wrapped into the Brown v. Board case before the Supreme Court. What we're looking at here are the exteriors of the schools. Here is a white school in Prince Edward County, Virginia. Notice that it's a brick two-story structure in a neighborhood landscaping and sidewalks. While here, we have several buildings that compose a single school, some of which are brick, some of which are tar paper, and it's in a rural setting. Now we move inside to the classrooms. Here we have a white school in Prince Edward County. Notice that the students seem relatively comfortable. While we take a look at African-American school, children are wearing coats. There's a very large heater in the middle of the room, thus showing us just how cold it was in these rooms. Moving on to other parts of the buildings, here we have a home ec class in a white school. Notice, much of the furniture and appliances are relatively new and modern, while in the African-American schools, it's a much different story. It's in a basement, the materials are much older, and also you can tell much more warm. These exhibits were submitted by both the plaintiffs and the defendants to show, on the plaintiff's side, that these facilities were unequal, whereas on the defendant's side, they wanted to show that these facilities were just about equal.
So as we're looking at those, we have to talk about how one of those cases, the Brown versus Board of Education of Topeka, made its way into the federal courts. First of all, is the Brown in this case, the Linda Brown that we saw earlier?
It is Linda Brown. And she was the daughter of Oliver Brown, who was a, he was in Topeka, and he was a welder in the shops of the Santa Fe Railroad. That's what, again, I have to look exactly for the facts.
He was also a part-time preacher. And then some of the pictures you see, you see that they had him wearing his, or he chose to wear his collar, which adds another dimension to this case.
It does. It was very powerful. But he was not, he was brought into the case, he was approached by the NAACP, he didn't seek them out. But the reason that, one reason that the NAACP and Thurgood Marshall chose the Brown case and not those other cases, was to avoid a dispute about whether or not the facilities were equal. The fact that both sides, in the Prince George's case, had the gall, we would say, after seeing those photographs, to actually present them and say, "Look, they in fact were equal," was confusing, according to Marshall. And that's why he picked a school where there was no allegation of separate but equal facilities. He was stressing the fact that Linda Brown, as she said in that incredibly moving introduction, did you hear what she said about her tears freezing up as she walked to school? The fact that she had to walk six blocks to a school bus, then to take a long bus ride to this segregated Monroe Elementary School, whereas there was this other school, Sumner Elementary, which was seven blocks from her house, which she could have walked directly to, for her and for her father, was an indignity and an outrage that was self-evident and didn't rely on exactly whether the facilities were equal or not.
So it was filed in the U.S. District Court, February 28, 1951. And the arguments before the court, NAACP was represented by Robert Carter and Jack Greenberg, arguing for Topeka School Board Lester Godell. And it was a three-judge panel, Walter Huxman, Arthur Mellett, and Delmas Hill. And Judge Walter Huxman wrote the opinion. Can you tell us anything about that opinion that we should know about for this story?
Well, the important aspect of that opinion, I would say, is that although the judges rejected the application of Swett and McLaren, which were two cases where the NAACP had prevailed, it did include a finding of fact indicating that segregation of schools was harmful, which was incredible for the NAACP. It's precisely the issue that was so controversial before the Supreme Court. So it was a decision that on the merits was adverse to the NAACP. But in terms of that little finding of fact, there's a little nugget in there that was very helpful.
So Jeff Rosen, can you explain then, once again, how it actually, these cases made it to the Supreme Court? Were the justices looking for a case to decide this? What was the process where these five cases were consolidated and the court agreed to hear them?
I don't know that the justices were looking for it, but there was a disagreement among the lower courts, which increases the possibility that the court will take the case. It was very important that the president had, both the Truman and Eisenhower administrations had filed briefs. Philip Elman, a former clerk for Felix Frankfurter, wrote a brief that he considered the most important of his entire career, where he methodically went through the court's previous precedents and showed how they compelled the result in Brown. So I think, to a certain extent, the court felt that it couldn't avoid it. But then something very dramatic happened. I don't know if this is the time to tell the story.
Probably not.
Okay. I can't wait to tell that story.
I want to keep my audience coming in.
I'll wait for you to ask me.
Let's take two more calls. And then we're going to talk about what the Supreme Court looked like in 1952, because in fact, this course, court, excuse me, this case was heard twice by two different courts. And we'll talk about the drama that caused that court to be different the second time around. Gary is in Tampa, Florida. Hi, Gary, you are on the air. Welcome to our program.
Thank you. While I am aware that there were impeach Earl Warren signs on southern highways, what I'm curious about was Brown versus Board of Education in issues, say, in the 1956 presidential campaign, or the 1960, or the 1964, 1968, et cetera. I don't remember reading about it, if it was a specific issue raised in any debates. And I'm just curious to hear some feedback.
Well, I don't know that I can talk about presidential debates in Brown versus Board of Education, but I can say that it was a, it was made a highly salient issue in politics, certainly in the South where there was deep resistance to Brown. So if it wasn't debated in formal terms, it was certainly something that was talked about. Earl Warren was a focus of, you know, he was the person from which one wanted a pound of flesh, right? He was the representation of Brown and the court, in the sense that the court had been activist in a way that it had never been before. So I think it's clear that Brown was an issue in politics generally. I'm sure that at various moments, it was an issue in presidential politics. Certainly, it became an issue in presidential politics during the Nixon campaigns, and later on, after the court had actually started to enforce the decision.
Josh here in Algonah, Iowa, and You're On C-SPAN. Welcome to Landmark Cases.
Hi, I just want to say quickly, I hope that C-SPAN will expand on their 12 historic cases and do another 12 historic cases here in a little bit.
Let's do it.
But my question was, absolutely. My question was, did Justice Hugo Black, who had been a member of the KKK, and also the majority opinion in Korematsu, redeem himself by voting to end school segregation?
Such a great question. And as you say, Hugo Black is appointed to the court by Roosevelt soon after he's appointed. It's reported that he was in the Klan, there's an outcry. He gives a radio address, and just check it out on YouTube, because it's remarkably unadorned. He stands before the mics and he says, "I did join the Klan, I therefore resigned. I never rejoined. This is all I have to say about the matter." And everyone goes, "Bravo, Justice Black, you've really done it. You've answered all of our questions." And he was allowed to go on. But in fact, the outcry, which led to protests around his house, must have made a deep impression on him, because he joined some path-breaking opinions recognizing racial equality and criminal procedure cases. And during the Brown case, he's the one Southerner in the initial vote, and we'll tell the story in just a little bit, who actually is very keen to vote to strike down segregation. Some have speculated it was, in fact, to redeem the stain of his Klan membership. He's also the only Southerner who says at the conference, "There's going to be blood and people are going to die, and we should announce a clear rule and get out of here because the court cannot solve this." So he really is bringing his political wisdom to bear. There's one final story that's interesting. Walter Dillinger, former Solicitor General, was a clerk for Hugo Black. And at one point, he asked the justice, you know, "So, Justice Black, why'd you join the Klan?" And there's this silence among the other clerks, they can't believe that he asked him. And Black paused for a moment, he said, "Son, if you were running for Senate in Alabama in the 1920s, you'd join the Klan too." So that was his excuse, but I think he felt the need to redeem himself, and perhaps he did some of that with Brown.
Your question's a nice segue into our just brief discussion of what the court looked like in 1952. The chief justice was Fred Vinson. And if you watched our series last week, you will remember that Fred Vinson was a Truman appointee and in some cases described as a Truman crony. And he was joined on the court by Justices Hugo Black, Harold Burton, Tom Clark, William O. Douglas, Felix Frankfurter, Robert Jackson, Sherman Minton, and Stanley Reed. So last week, we heard that Vinson did not do a very effective job at bringing coalitions together for a very, very divided court. In 1952, was it still very, very divided? And was he having a difficult time bringing together two groups within the court that really didn't see eye to eye?
Well, I think the basic problem with Vinson is that his colleagues were, did not respect him very much. And thus, he did not have the institutional authority that was necessary to try to bring the justices together, is what I would say. The division that I think is most important to perhaps talk about is the rivalry between Jackson and Frankfurter on the one hand, and Hugo Black and Douglas on the other. And what that represented in terms of how the justices thought about the Constitution, I'm sure Jeffrey will have things to say about this. The thing to say about the first combination is that there was a belief in judicial restraint and a concern about the justices issuing holdings that were legal holdings and not political. And so a lot of concern about how to actually deal with Plessy. Plessy is a precedent that was on the books for a very long time. And Justice Jackson and Justice Frankfurter were concerned about how to justify a decision to overrule Plessy.
Can I just pick up on that? Tamiko so well describes the fissures on the court, and they become manifest in the first conference over Brown. So as Tamiko says, the colleagues don't respect Vinson. Frankfurter at one point had threatened to punch, Vinson had threatened to punch Frankfurter in the nose, because Frankfurter was the Harvard professor who was always condescending to him and treating him like a Truman poker buddy, and they didn't respect him. So the initial vote is something like four votes to strike down segregation, Black, Douglas, Minton, and Burton. Three votes possibly to uphold it, Vinson from Kentucky, Stanley Reed from Kentucky, and Tom Clark from Texas, and two who seem undecided, Frankfurter and Jackson, who for the reasons that Tamiko said, are in favor of judicial restraint. They don't like segregation, they're New Deal Democrats, but they don't think the court should be stepping in here. So the initial vote is taken, and it looks like the segregation is going to win. And then all of a sudden, before the court can decide the case, Vinson drops dead of a heart attack. So on the funeral train, on the way home from the funeral, Felix Frankfurter says to his colleagues, "This is the first indication I've ever had that there is a God." He was not a nice, not a nice man. But then the court reargues the case, and Warren comes in, and you probably want to wait to hear what happens the second time around.
Because the first, I want to get the attorneys on the docket for our viewers, because there's a familiar name. The defendant attorneys included John Davis, who has been in now three of our landmark cases. Who was John Davis and why was he at the helm in so many of these important cases?
Well, he was the presidential candidate, unsuccessful presidential candidate, turned one of the great appellate lawyers of his age, courtly, silver-haired, fit. You could call him a strict constructionist. He definitely said, "I don't believe in a living Constitution," although I do think the Constitution can occasionally adopt, as the evolution of the Commerce Clause shows. But he really did feel like he was defending Southern traditions. And for him, this is an easy case. He says, "Look, the courts have repeatedly affirmed segregation, Plessy's on the books, the text doesn't forbid segregation. The original understanding clearly allowed segregated schools." He thought he was going to win easily. And for him, he's so invested in this case, that after the oral argument, this is in Richard Kluger's great book, which I want all of our readers to read, to really, Simple Justice gives the wonderful human stories so well. At the end of the oral argument, Davis has tears in his eyes, Thurgood Marshall said. That's how he actually was invested in maintaining segregation.
And on the other side of the lead counsel was Thurgood Marshall, as we've mentioned. I want to get these other names in here, because some of them are the big names in civil rights. Robert Carter, who was part of the NAACP legal team, Spotswood Robinson arguing the Virginia case, Louis Redding, Jack Greenberg argued part of the Delaware case, and George Hayes, and James Nabrit. I want to show another video next, because you talked about the impact of this social science experiment, the doll case, on the justices' thinking on this. So we have a video with, about Kenneth and Mamie Clark, who had conducted this test, and it's, and we'll talk more about its impact on the justices deciding this case. Let's watch.
The doll test was integral to the Brown v. Board of Education, because it clearly demonstrated that separate was not equal, and separate was not good. In fact, separate was an injustice. What we're looking at here are the dolls that Doctors Kenneth and Mamie Clark used in their doll studies. The doll tests were a series of studies that Mamie Clark and Kenneth Clark did to try to determine racial awareness in young children, with the implication being that, in a segregated society, if children are aware of race and the differences in race, and the differences in how different racial groups are treated, that it would impact how they felt about themselves. What they did that actually became very well-known, part of the Brown case, was they showed young children black and white dolls, and they would ask the children, "Show me the doll that's nice. Give me the doll that's the best. Give me the doll that looks like you." And more often than not, the black children showed the doll as the doll, the nice doll was the white doll. The doll that was the best was the white doll. When he got to that last question, "Give me the doll that looks like you," that's when the children would pause and be a bit more confused or looked troubled, as Dr. Clark would say, because they had said, in many cases, "This is the bad doll. This is the nice doll." And so remembering that they had said, "This is the bad doll," they now had to show the doll that looked like them. And it was particularly difficult for them. And some children, some black children, would do, and some chose the white doll that looked like them, because they couldn't embrace. After having said, "This is bad, not nice," they couldn't embrace it.
How often does the court rely on social science in making its decision? Was this an unusual thing, that this became part of their thinking?
So that's a good question. You know, Justice Brandeis in practice had introduced the reliance on social science into lawyer's practice. And so it was not the first time in Brown versus Board of Education that the court relied on the social science. I think, though, that what made this different was that, first, over time, and I'm sure it was true then too, there was some question as to how reliable the doll studies were. It really was sort of a simple kind of experiment, and one could raise questions about the methodology and all of the things that we and all of the things that we would think about today in terms of reliability of social science. So no, it wasn't altogether new, but on the other hand, the extent to which the Brown opinion ends up relying on the Doll studies and on the idea that black children feel inferior because of segregation, I think, was profound.
So we left the story with the death of the Chief Justice. Now, was it because of the Chief Justice's death that they decided to rehear the case, or was that already going to be reheard?
That is an important question. I don't want to get it wrong. They did decide to rehear it because Frankfurter asked for rehearing. So was it right that he died after the rehearing had been granted, or before?
I'm not sure about that detail, whether he, what role his death played in the rehearing.
But the court couldn't come to a decision after hearing the first round of oral arguments?
They chose not to, and Frankfurter--
They chose not to.
I mean, they could have voted. Frankfurter, who tried to take credit for everything, insisted that he knew, first of all, he had special insight into the South because he had taught Southern students at Harvard Law School, so he really knew how they would react. And then he said, "If we just commission this paper about the original understanding of desegregation, that'll give us some time and maybe allow a consensus to happen." So anyway, Vinson dies, Frankfurter says there's a God, and then Earl Warren is appointed by Dwight Eisenhower.
Who is Earl Warren?
Earl Warren is the former governor of California. He was the Republican candidate for Vice President in 1948, when Tom Dewey ran. And he is a tall, blond, all-American, moderate Republican. This is someone who'd really made civil rights one of his callings in California and called for the people to be brought together. He does have one stain on his legacy, a very important stain, and that is supporting the Japanese internment that you talked about so vividly in the Korematsu case. And as Attorney General of California, he had supported that. It wasn't until the end of his life, in his memoirs in 1976, he finally expressed remorse for the Japanese internment, and he wept when he reflected on what he'd done. But he was nevertheless a very, very moderate, and remember, this is a time when the Democratic Party had been the party of segregation, and the Republican Party was the party of Lincoln. So for Earl Warren to be in favor of civil rights at the time was not unusual. He had wanted the first Supreme Court seat. Dwight Eisenhower promised it to him. Then Vinson dies, and Warren says, "Give me the seat." Eisenhower said, "I didn't promise to make you Chief Justice." Warren, consummate politician, said, "You said the first seat. This is the first seat." So he held him to the deal. Eisenhower appoints him, later says it was the worst damn fool decision he ever made.
So the second set of oral arguments were heard, December 7th to 9th, 1953. The court, again, I'm going to read the justices: Chief Justice Earl Warren, Hugo Black, Harold Burton, Tom Clark, William Douglas, Felix Frankfurter, Robert Jackson, Sherman Minton, and Stanley Reed. What was the length of oral arguments the second time around, and did they differ very much in the arguments made during the first set?
Well, the oral arguments the second time around were focused on these questions about original intent. And the trouble there, Jeffrey's already explained what the problems were. The framers of the Fourteenth Amendment were not social integrationists in the way that we think of today. And so the question that was put before the lawyers, the NAACP lawyers struggled a bit. And the problem was that the answer was not going to be found in the questions that had been put before the lawyers and the court.
The seminal question before the court in this case, excuse me, "Does racial segregation of children in public schools deprive minority children of equal protection of the laws under the Fourteenth Amendment?" So I would like to have you tell the story because the Chief Justice decided that for this decision to work, it had to be unanimous. How did he get to unanimity?
This is a riveting decision, rather, story. It's a riveting decision and a riveting story of how he got there, and one of the great examples of judicial statesmanship in American constitutional history. So the arguments are heard, as Tomico so well described, and the justices have their vote in the private conference. And Warren begins by saying, "This is an easy case. This is an easy case. It's obvious that segregation has the intent and purpose and effect of degrading African-Americans." And then they take a vote. And it's not entirely clear what the first vote was, but it's at least six to three, maybe seven to two. And there are two major holdouts: Robert Jackson, the great advocate of judicial restraint, as Tomico said, and Stanley Reed from Kentucky, an ardent segregationist. So Jackson is in the hospital. He's had a heart attack. And Warren visits him and basically says it's very important for the court that this be unanimous. And Jackson, who, as Tomico said, can't see in the original understanding, or the text, or the precedent, or tradition, a reason for Brown, nevertheless, is a New Dealer who thinks that it's important, and he's going to join. And then finally, it comes down to Stanley Reed, the last segregationist. And Warren goes to visit Reed in his chambers and says, "Stanley, it's going to look bad for the court and bad for you if this is an eight-to-one decision with the one dissenter being a segregationist from the South. For the good of the court and the country, you've got to make it unanimous." And Reed, who is an institutionalist and cares about the court as an institution, agrees to make it unanimous. Warren then reads the decision to a spellbound courtroom. He says, "The question is, does segregation violate the Fourteenth Amendment? We believe it does." And Thurgood Marshall looks up at Stanley Reed. He cannot believe that this ardent segregationist actually voted to strike down segregation, and looks up questioningly, says, "You, Stanley Reed, you voted?" And Reed nods down silently at him and says, "Yes, I voted for this." Just this electric moment, and a real testament to Warren's statesmanship that he was able to create unanimity.
And let me read a little bit of Chief Justice Warren, who wrote the opinion for the court and what he had to say. "We conclude that in the field of public education, the doctrine of 'separate but equal' has no place. Separate educational facilities are inherently unequal. Therefore, we hold that the plaintiff and others similarly situated for whom the actions have been brought are, by reason of the segregation complained of, deprived of the equal protection of the laws guaranteed by the Fourteenth Amendment." I'm going to just let that stand and take some more calls because our time is evaporating quickly. Let's go to Christopher, who is watching in Brooklyn, New York. Hi, Christopher, you're on.
Yes, so a majority of white people were against segregation. And I actually, I saw your preview of the baby situation. The white baby looks like an angel, and the black baby looks like an ape. And death to the nigger.
All right, we're just going to let you move on from here. Dennis in Palestine, Texas, you're on the air. Go ahead, please. Hi, Dennis, you're on. Last tie for Dennis. We're going to move. All right, on to Ron, watching us in East Chicago, Indiana. Good evening, Ron.
Yes, good evening. I just want to real quickly say, wow, this program and this discussion and this show is so vital for our survival. Kudos and congratulations for your program. This is so vital for the survival of America. My question is, what do we have to do, what do we need to do to keep this going? This discussion has to keep going. You know, our neighborhoods are being robbed of our history, and you guys are doing a phenomenal job. Whether people agree with you or disagree with you, we've got to keep it going, especially during this presidential election. And I love you. I just want to keep it going. Thank you very much. God bless.
That's very kind of you. Appreciate the good comments there. What I would like, before we leave this, I did want to get one other thing on the record, which is, you mentioned earlier the Cold War. And in fact, and at least in the first case, the government filed an amicus brief that made the case to the justices about the United States' international reputation being damaged by segregation. So I want to ask you both, because often we hear the court saying that it's insulated from public opinion, yet this is one of several cases in this landmark series where wars were going on, or in this case, the Cold War, where there seems to be a determined impact on the outcome by the justices' realization about the politics or policy impacts of what they're reviewing. So help people understand how the court functions and what it says is an insulated study of the law environment, but we keep seeing instances where politics does impact the decision.
You know, it's so important to focus on this. We think of Brown as a counter-majoritarian decision, an unpopular decision that was imposing a rule of equality at a time when most of the country was in favor of segregation, because of that map you showed earlier, because it was so pervasive. But in fact, 54% of the country supported desegregation. It came down for the reasons that we've been discussing. It was an international embarrassment after World War II. It was derided as a kind of, you know, something worthy of the defeated Nazis to have this kind of justice of segregation and inferiority. And opinion was shifting quickly. It was really the fact that the Senate was controlled by a group of Southerners who refused to bring desegregation bills to the floor that, in some sense, was thwarting public opinion, and the fact that both the Truman and the Eisenhower administration, Eisenhower is no big fan of quick desegregation. He says Warren was a big mistake, but his administration does support striking down desegregation. For all these reasons, the court is aware of what Congress is thwarted from doing. It's aware of what the executive is trying to do. It knows about Jackie Robinson. And in that sense, Brown, far from thwarting the general rule that the court has tended over time to follow public opinion, surprisingly supports it.
So to the micro and then to the macro, we're going to listen next to Linda Brown talking about her family's reaction when they heard the court's decision. Let's watch.
Time stood still as the highest court of the land pounded over Brown versus Board of Education, until an afternoon in May of 1954, when I was at school, my father at work, and my mother at home during the family ironing and listening to the radio. At 12:52 PM, the announcement came. The court's decision on ending segregation was unanimous. That evening in our home was much rejoicing. I remember seeing tears of joy in the eyes of my father as he embraced us, repeating, "Thanks be unto God."
And so we move from Linda Brown to societal changes. What was the reaction in the country at the Brown decision?
Well, Thurgood Marshall was greeted as Mr. Civil Rights, as a hero, as an icon. There were many African-Americans who were very excited about the decision, very hopeful about the decision. The court was viewed, over time, as a hero, a protector of minorities because of the decision. The country, to a lot of people, seemed to be moving in the right direction. On the other hand, there were those who thought that the decision was outrageous, that it was the mother of judicial activism, that the court had not followed the law, that it hadn't been faithful to its imperatives as an institution, that the court had put itself in the position of being a legislature. So there was a lot of pushback against Brown v. Board of Education.
Some of that pushback occurred in the Congress of the United States. And I'd like to have you talk a little bit about the massive resistance movement. We've got two statements, one from a member of the House and one from a member of the Senate who were involved in this. First is Josh John Bell Williams, who made a House floor speech on May 17, 1954. And he said, among other things, "The time is at hand when the states must reassert their constitutional rights or suffer their own destruction. If states are to preserve their sovereignties, if they are to preserve the Constitution, they must declare the Black Monday decision," that's the Brown decision, "to be illegal and invalid and of no force and effect within the territorial limits of their respective jurisdictions." And then Senator Harry Byrd of Virginia, who organized the massive resistance movement, said, "The unanimous decision of the Supreme Court to abolish segregation in public education is not only sweeping," excuse me, "but will bring implications and dangers of the greatest consequence. It is the most serious blow that has yet been struck against the rights of states in a matter vitally affecting their authority and welfare." They authored what is called the Southern Manifesto, and it was signed by 19 senators and more than 80 representatives, all of them Southern Democrats in Congress. What was the effect of this?
The effect of that, which you summarized so vividly, can you imagine, as you said, calling it Black Monday and then signing the Southern Manifesto, was precisely to encourage Southern states to resist in the ways that the manifesto demanded. And the resistance, as Tomico suggested, was powerful. People across the South set up private academies to educate their kids. In 1959, Prince Edward County, Virginia, closed its entire public school system rather than obey court order to integrate, and it was closed for five years. The public schools in South Carolina were closed for a great period of time. Norfolk, Charlottesville, Warren County, schools were all closed by state officials. And then finally, the resistance culminated in this next dramatic case. Central High School, Little Rock, Arkansas, the resistance to allowing integration is so great that President Eisenhower has to call in the National Guard, and we can talk about that great case of Cooper v. Aaron, if you like.
Let me take some calls. This is Dennis in Palestine, Texas. You're on the air. Hi, Dennis.
Hi. I just want to say Jeffrey Rosen is correct that Richard Krueger's simple justice, it's fantastic work and was an epiphany for this Southern boy who had only heard one side of the argument for most of my childhood and even into college. I wanted to ask about a law clerk for Justice Jackson by the name of William Rehnquist, who, at his confirmation hearing in 1971, the issue came up that he had, in fact, written a dissent for Justice Jackson in the Brown case when it came before the Warren Court. And he said in '71 that he was, that was just, they were just covering their bets, so to speak, he wanted to, but he did not really feel that way. And I just wonder if either of your guests have checked to see the veracity of Justice Rehnquist's comments at his confirmation some 20 years later.
You summarize it very well. It was an important controversy. The memo was quite vivid, in which Chief Justice Rehnquist, then the law clerk, said, basically, "The fact is that Southerners don't like black people and are never going to admit them, and the truth is, I believe that Plessy versus Ferguson was good law." And as you say, Chief Justice Rehnquist, throughout his career, maintained he'd been writing in Jackson's voice, that Jackson had asked him to express his own thoughts because he, Jackson, was undecided. Now, all we know is that Justice Jackson's secretary disputed Rehnquist's account and said that Jackson had never asked for competing opinions to be written in his voice. And according to her, Rehnquist was expressing his own views. I think that's the most direct evidence that we have on the point.
Maurice is in Memphis. Hi, Maurice, you're on.
Good evening to all of you. The Fourteenth Amendment does not apply to the federal government, though I think we feel that certain fundamental protections are so important that they appear twice. So the Fifth and the Fourteenth Amendments each have a due process clause. The equal protection of the laws is a more explicit safeguard of prohibited unfairness than due process of law. But I would not assert that that implies the two are always interchangeable phrases. How do you feel about the assertion that the concepts of equal protection and due process are not mutually exclusive?
Well, I think you're referring to the controversy over Bowling versus Sharp, where the court reads an equal protection component into the Fifth Amendment. There's a lot of discussion about exactly how the court does this, how the court explains it. I don't think the court goes very far towards an explanation. The fact of the matter is that there was not going to be any way that you would get one holding in the four cases involving the states and a different holding in the case involving the District of Columbia. Therefore, we get this equal protection component read into the due process clause. As to how appropriate that was, I tend to think that there is an understanding of due process that makes it a very robust concept. It's, the due process clause is the basis that the court ends up using for fundamental rights analysis. So I would say that, you know, they're not the same, but there's an appropriateness to reading that component, the equal protection component into the Fifth Amendment, under those circumstances.
Tomico was absolutely right. If I could just add one quick beat, Justice Harlan, who wrote that dissent in Plessy, believed that exemption from class legislation or unfriendly legislation based on race was itself a privilege and immunity of citizenship.
Yes.
And the court read the privileges and immunities clause out of the Fourteenth Amendment, as you well know, if you watched the Excellent Slaughterhouse episode. So that argument is no longer available, but for some of the framers of the Fourteenth Amendment-- Amendment, it might have been a less close case.
Then a quick comment to Mr. Putnam on Twitter, who said, "What did the Brown v. Board decision do to the legacy of Justice John Marshall Harlan, notable for his Plessy dissent?"
It vindicated him as one of the great prophets of the 19th century.
And next is Chuck, Palmyra, Pennsylvania. Hi, Chuck, you're on. I have to push the button. Hey, Chuck, you're on here. Go ahead.
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead, please. Hello? Hello?
Yes, sir.
Hello? Although you say that Brown reversed the Plessy decision, isn't it true that railroads continued to ignore the Brown decision and continue segregating passenger rail cars until the Civil Rights Act?
Well, it's not just railroads. It's all kinds of public institutions that don't exactly comply with Brown, the letter of Brown forthwith. And so it takes a very long time, as you say, for Brown to actually be implemented. As Jeffrey pointed out, there is a Cooper versus Aaron decision where the court speaks to the issue of school desegregation. The problem is that unless there is, in the early years after Brown, if there's not these dramatic instances of resistance to the decision, then the school districts are able to proceed in whatever way they see fit for a very long time. It's not until the mid, really the late 1960s, after the Civil Rights Act, that Brown is implemented in any substantial way.
Our next piece of video is Thurgood Marshall. And he gave an interview to Mike Wallace, famous of CBS, on Eisenhower, President Eisenhower, and what he thought of the president's decision in response, rather, to the desegregation of schools. This was taped on April 16 in 1957. Let's watch.
Well, I do not think that President Eisenhower has done anywhere near what he could have done. I wonder whether it's too late. I don't personally, I don't think it's too late. But I think at some, the president should have shortly after the decisions, or at least by now, have gotten on a television network or radio and spoken as the chief executive of this government to the good people of the South, urging them to support the decision of the Supreme Court, is the law of the land, whether they believed in it or not, and to use the full influence of his position as president to bring about peaceful solution of this problem. I think he was obliged to do that, and I think that his failure to do so does not help us at all, especially when we realize that as a result of the failure of the good forces to take over, we have allowed these other forces like the white citizens councils and the Klan to threaten and intimidate good people. Moral leadership should come from the top executive of the government. It's his responsibility.
Five months after that decision, President Eisenhower sent federal troops in to enforce the desegregation in Little Rock, Arkansas. So walk us through President Eisenhower's legacy on this.
So Cooper v. Aaron, as if Brown wasn't dramatic enough, Cooper v. Aaron is also incredibly dramatic. You have a court order to integrate Central High School. You have students who are being turned away by mobs. You have Governor Orville Faubus standing at the schoolhouse door, saying that he's never going to allow the students to come in. And you have President Eisenhower's decision to send the National Guard to ensure the admission of these school kids. And then you have a Supreme Court, which is so afraid that its rule to integrate the schools will not be obeyed, because they're not sure what Eisenhower will do, that each of the justices signs the decision in ink on the decision itself. This is never done before. All of the justices, to prove their unanimity, sign it. It seems like a show of strength. In fact, it's a sign that they're scared to death, that he's really not going to follow through. And there's also language in Cooper v. Aaron, language of judicial supremacy that almost overstates the case. This court is supreme in its interpretation of the Constitution, seeming to suggest the president and Congress have no role. That wasn't what John Marshall asserted. Basically, these are nine men, and that's what they were then, who literally don't know what the president will do. The fact that he did send the troops, and despite his grumbling about Earl Warren, did ultimately say, "The Supreme Court has made its decision. I have to enforce the law," helps mitigate Eisenhower's legacy. And there's some interesting new revisionist history, saying that behind the scenes Eisenhower, you know, was aware of shifting politics, but he was more supportive of desegregation than he appeared in public.
I want to show one more video, and then I'd like to come back to you and talk about this. This is actually Earl Warren, taped in 1969 in an interview. And he's talking about his frustration with the resistance to the Brown decision. So let's mix that in, and we'll hear your thoughts on this.
In some parts of the country, yes. One couldn't help being impatient when he would see the orders of the court flouted and just not obeyed in any sense of the word, and where illegal things were changed in form, but not in substance and carried on. Of course, one feels frustrated at that. But when the American people as a whole recognize that we have, in the past, been wrong in depriving certain minorities of their constitutional rights, and when we make the decision to see that they will in the future have these rights, then I think we're on the way to solving most of our domestic problems.
Well, a couple of things to say. First of all, I agree that there is this revisionist scholarship on Eisenhower that puts a somewhat different spin on his views. However, and there is Cooper versus Aaron, where he sent in the guard. Those are important. At the same time, I think the problem with, for Eisenhower, as it relates to school desegregation, is that there's a sense that he doesn't, first of all, he's very supportive of states' rights, which is what Thurgood Marshall is talking about it. And there's a sense that he is not really supportive of the principle of desegregation as a personal matter. So there's this story about how, at a White House dinner, he was overheard saying that the people of the South who were resistant were not bad people. They simply were concerned about the little white girls sitting beside overgrown black boys in the classroom. So I do think that there was not that personal commitment to Brown versus Board of Education. And he, in that sense, was on the wrong side of history. Earl Warren, on the other hand, also a politician, and not a man who, certainly when he was appointed, was respected as a great legal thinker. His skills were political, understood that having the office of the presidency behind the Supreme Court, having Congress, having all three branches acting in the same way as we had after 1964, was really the only way that the decision would be enforced.
Let me take a call from Ken, watching us in Somerset, New Jersey. Hi, Ken, you're on.
Hi, thank you. I have two questions. Number one, it's my understanding that despite what you said earlier, that Eisenhower said that appointing Warren to the Supreme Court was one of his worst decisions. It's my understanding that at the time that he appointed Warren, he intentionally appointed him because of this case, and he wanted that to have a kind of a decision. And I'd like to hear your comments on that. And secondly, it's also my understanding that when Eisenhower sent troops into Arkansas, it was also the first time that the president, that the executive, has stood behind the Supreme Court, especially since President Jackson in 1828. And I'd like to hear your comments.
Well, I love the fact that you bring up Jackson. And of course, he did famously say in the Cherokees Indians case, he said of John Marshall's decision, perhaps apocryphally, John Marshall has made his decision, now let him enforce it, confirming Hamilton's adage that the Supreme Court has neither person nor sword, and therefore depends on the president. I had not heard that Eisenhower appointed Warren because he wanted a positive decision in Brown. The fact that he resisted making the appointment at all, trying to re-nag and saying, "I didn't mean you for chief," seems to call that into question. And I do agree with Tamika's counter, which is that despite the revisionism, on the whole, he was on the wrong side here. So I'd be interested, if any viewers have a site for that, please tweet it in or something like that, because it would be interesting, but I haven't heard that particular story.
So we have 10 minutes to talk about the 60 years of legacy of the Brown decision, which is just impossible to do. So I first want to start with its legal legacy. We've got four citations of Brown. In '64, Reynolds versus Sims. In 1967, Loving versus Virginia, which was racial integration in marriages. San Antonio Independent School District versus Rodriguez in '73, and Planned Parenthood v. Casey in 1992. So if you look at its legal legacy, what has it left the country with from that perspective?
Well, that's a really big question, I will say. You know, the most important legal legacy of Brown, I think, goes back to the point that it established the idea that the Supreme Court can be interventionist to protect individual rights in the most profound way. It was cited in various cases where the issue wasn't schools on that point. But I will also say that Brown has a mixed legacy, in part because it could be interpreted in so many ways. So you cite San Antonio versus Rodriguez. There is a discussion of that decision by Justice Powell, who writes San Antonio, which is a case that holds that wealth isn't suspect and education is not a fundamental right, that is inconsistent with Thurgood Marshall's and a lot of people's understanding of the consequences of Brown versus Board of Education. So when it came to the question of what it meant for education itself, Brown was not persuasive authority on that point. And there are other examples that one could point to.
So I want to get this into it, because with talking about the integration of schools, Bob Hepburn on Twitter says, "So far, you have not mentioned the hedge from the Supreme Court, using the phrase 'integrating with all deliberate speed.'" So how did this come into play? So how instructive was the court in actual rollout of desegregation?
So thank you, Bob, for noting that. It's really important. And the language came from our friend Felix Frankfurter, who always had something up his sleeve. And he said, once again, "I know from English common law and principles of equity that when you're not sure that a particular decree will be immediately enforced, you can give the parties a little bit of discretion and tell them they don't have to do it immediately." And this principle was really resisted by Hugo Black, who actually, unlike Frankfurter, who said he taught Southern Harvard Law students, actually was from the South. And Black said, "You give the South any room, it's going to be worse." But Frankfurter put in that language, and there was lots of other hedges in that decision in Brown, too. While giving weight to public and private considerations, the plaintiff should make a prompt and reasonable start. The courts can consider problems related to administration. But disagreement, the court did say, "The vitality of the constitutional principles can't be allowed to yield simply because of disagreement with them." The bottom line is, "With all deliberate speed" was a huge pass to the South, basically saying, "Go ahead, we're not going to really be on you if you resist." And as Tamika, absolutely, this is such a central point that she made, it wasn't until not only the passage of the Civil Rights Act in '64, but the guidelines adopted by the Department of Health, Education, and Welfare just a few years later, that threatened to withhold federal funds from schools that didn't desegregate. Only then did meaningful desegregation occur. So it took more than a decade after Brown to actually achieve its promise.
So the court seems to continue to struggle, at least at the university level, with affirmative action cases, and another one scheduled for this term in the court. So what has really been the societal legacy of Brown versus Board of Education?
Another big question. Well, I would point as to Parents Involved, which was a case about K-12 education and whether school districts could voluntarily desegregate. And there, the court held, it struck down the policies that were at issue, which in Louisville had been adopted, a desegregation policy adopted, after the school system was no longer officially under court order. By consensus, large consensus of the community, it wanted to continue with this integration program in schools. It was considered a model community for integration, and the court impeded that, saying that the principles established in the affirmative action cases regarding diversity really don't apply in the K-12 context. And then, as you mentioned, there is the continuing controversy over affirmative action. The court is going to hear the Fisher case again. It will rule on the merits, and it doesn't look good to proponents of affirmative action. And, you know, it may not be a sweeping holding, but the nature of the conversation that the court is having is, really goes back to that word, some would say, of judicial supremacy. The court, in the affirmative action context, is saying it needs to be satisfied that there aren't race-neutral alternatives to these race-conscious policies. And there are university officials, educational officials, who would argue that they need to be in that position of exercising discretion about composing their student bodies.
Here's a little bit of Chief Justice John Roberts and the Parents Involved decision. Parents Involved in Community Schools versus Seattle, it was heard in 2007. Some of what he wrote is this. "Before Brown, schoolchildren were told where they could and could not go to school based on the color of their skin. The school districts in these cases have not carried the heavy burden of demonstrating that we should allow this once again, even for very different reasons. The way to stop discrimination on the basis of race is to stop discriminating on the basis of race."
There is, as Tamika so well says, a huge debate on the Supreme Court right now about the meaning of Brown. Is it a ban on all racial classifications, as Chief Justice Roberts seems to suggest? Or is it a ban on racial subordination? Does it demand colorblindness? Or does it just prohibit caste-affirming laws that degrade? The court is deeply divided on this question. The division itself can be found in the Brown opinion and in Brown II, which didn't clearly resolve whether it was demanding equality of opportunity, the end to formal segregation, or equality of results, actual integration. So this continues to this day. All I can say is that with C-SPAN, the National Constitution Center is going to be hosting a series of debates and conversations on all these questions, including a great one on the Fisher case next week with our partners at Intelligence Squared. But this, the fact that even years after Brown, more than 60 years after Brown, we still haven't resolved what its central meaning is, suggests that the meaning of the Reconstruction Amendments continues to be contested and debated.
My last piece of video is Thurgood Marshall. So Thurgood Marshall, as you know, was the architect of the NAACP's legal defense strategy, which decided to attack the segregation of schools as a process to help change society. Thurgood Marshall, as you know, went on to be appointed to the Supreme Court as the first African-American justice. He served from 1967 through 1991. Here's Justice Marshall at the National Bar Association meeting in 1988, accepting Jurist of the Century Award, and he talked a bit about the state of race relations post-Brown.
I don't care about the Constitution alone, or this Declaration of Independence, or all of the books together. It's not that important. What is important is a goal toward which you're moving, a goal that is a basis of true democracy, which is over and above the law. And it's something that won't happen, but you must pray for it and work for it. And that goal is very simple. That goal is that if a child, a Negro child, is born to a black mother in a state like Mississippi, or any other state like that, born to the dumbest, poorest sharecropper, is by merely drawing its first breath in a democracy, there and without any more, is born with the exact same rights as a similar child born to a white parent of the wealthiest person in the United States. No, it's not true. Of course, it's not true. It never will be true. But I challenge anybody to take a position that that is not the goal But I challenge anybody to take a position that that is not the goal that we should be shooting for, and start talking about how far we've come, and start talking about how close we are.
And with that thought, we have about a minute left for your comments on the Brown v. Board decision in 1954, and really what its significance has been on American society.
Well, I think it is a decision that was important in constitutional law. It's generally considered the most important constitutional law case of the 20th century, and that's rightly so. And it's a paradox, though, because of all of the things that we've talked about. Brown was not considered to be a con law case that was actually based in law, right? There are many questions about the method that the court uses to reach its decision, but over time, it is accepted as the right principle. The court did the right thing. That's important. It sets a high bar, high aspirations for us, and as Justice Marshall said so many times, we're still climbing towards its goals.
Jefferson, in the Declaration of Independence, promised that all men are created equal, yet he owned slaves. It took Lincoln's New Birth of Freedom at Gettysburg to make the promise of Declaration something closer to a reality. The Civil War Amendments, the 13th, 14th, and 15th Amendments tried to enshrine that in the Constitution, but it took a century after that for Brown, at least, to begin to make the promise of the Declaration and the Reconstruction Amendments a reality. But we certainly have not come close to achieving that promise for the reasons we've been discussing.
Our thanks to Tamika Brown Negan and Jeffrey Rosen for being with us for this installment of Landmark Cases, looking at the 1954 decision of Brown versus Board of Education. And thanks to you for being part of our audience.
Our series continues next week with the Supreme Court's 1961 decision in Mapp versus Ohio. In that case, justices strengthened the Fourth Amendment protection against unreasonable searches and seizures, making it illegal for evidence obtained without a warrant to be used in a criminal trial in state court. Find out more next Monday, live at 9:00 PM Eastern on C-SPAN, C-SPAN 3, and C-SPAN Radio. You can also learn more about C-SPAN's Landmark Cases series online. Go to cspan.org/landmarkcases. You can order C-SPAN's Landmark Cases book, featuring background, highlights, and the legal impact of each case, written by veteran Supreme Court journalist Tony Morrow and published by C-SPAN in cooperation with CQ Press. Landmark Cases is available for $8.95 plus shipping.